Called order for the religions approval of nets Monday November 12th public session.
Make a motion, oh I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to accept them as written.
Okay, second, any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, we have one person not here, do we have to do, is she here? Okay, so, okay, um, non-public session from November, Monday, November 12th.
I'll make a motion to accept a non-public session.
Second, um, all in favor? Anybody want to? Any opposed? Okay, and then Monday, November 28th, Board Budget Committee Workshop.
I'll make your name.
Okay.
I read them over and they would find them.
Alright, great, and any discussions? Alright, all up in favor? Any opposed? Alright. So, now the next thing on.
So, we have the budget discussions that next, but we do have two students.
Oh, yes.
To give the student reports, those admin reports and the superintendent reports we submitted in writing because who would have this good budget conversation? But if people don't object, it'd be great, the young adults.
Young adults, yes, so.
Young adults, you're on.
You wanna come in so that the, the owls need to be able to see you.
From right now, we're here.
There you go, come on in.
Um, so we keep brief since y'all have a lot of work to do tonight, but um, last Saturday we listed the winter center formal at the high school and it was pretty popular, we had a lot of kids come. Um, next week we're planning to host the spirit week before break, we have the dates planned out for that and we're excited to start on that. Other than that, I think that's pretty much all that's been going on. Getting ready for break.
The formal went well?
Yes.
Great.
There's a lot of people there.
Good, wonderful.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Brendan to kind of facilitate the budget discussion.
Sure, so I think what I'll do is I'll just start by giving an overview and then I have an idea of next steps we can take here, but. So to start, um, Budget Committee, as you know, was formed in the spring. Mary and I have been attending their meetings. I think all of them except the one last Monday. As the board also knows, so we came in with a draft budget, the administration. We made some changes to that to get the budget lowered. So we took out the server that we needed and we put that into what we were thinking we're gonna put into a grant. We reduced the curricular expenditure from I think it was like three fifty down to about one fifty and changed the purpose of it. To do K two decodables at the younger level and to focus on. Um, training at the map for the map. And then we also took out all of the capital projects that we had add for like asbestos abatement windows, those things. And we would put them either into the budget as a, I mean, either into the warrant as a separate article or we would add the ones we could into a grant. If we can tie it into COVID, basically. Talking with members of the Budget Committee, they've had a lot of discussions about. Class sizes, I guess I would say, and what those ratios are, what they should be, that type of thing. Gabe sent an email last week, I think it was Gabe. Um, stating that from the meeting on Monday, last Monday. The Budget Committee is hopeful and would recommend that. The board and the Budget Committee take a look at. A reduction of staffing and the amount that they had said was roughly eight teaching positions. For about six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, I think it was something like that. Even though I didn't see it in your letter, I was also told that there was some conflict from the dump truck. Or the truck, having that come out of the budget and maybe do a lease instead. We definitely, I mean, my opinion, we definitely have to get one, it's not gonna pass inspection, but letter was a lease or a buy. That's a different thing, so. In general, the board hasn't had a chance to have a conversation about any of the reductions in staffing. The initial reductions to the budget, I sent them those ideas after the admin meeting by email. Didn't have another meeting prior to this. My suggestion for. Kind of the next step here would be to kind of divide ourselves up. And I think you've done something similar in the past, have people from the various attendance areas meet with the admin from those attendance areas? Have a conversation about what types of a reduction in staffing could be possible? What? You might think in your head like this is a great idea, but then you talk to them and they're like, no, 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 that is not a great idea, or they might be like, yeah, we can do that. But at least if the school board members and some of the Budget Committee members have that same conversation with the admin, do it for twenty, thirty minutes. And then come back together and I think if we just have sort of a report out of what people thought about it, then at least both groups can be coming to it from the same standpoint. Does that seem reasonable? Steve, does it seem unreasonable? Yeah, great, this is I say Steve, that's either one.
They're willing to give that a go.
Yeah, so what we will, what I would.
Yes, Angie, quick question, how many unfilled positions can we have currently?
It's funny, I didn't get a thing recently, I think it was, last time I knew, I think it's fifteen maybe, but most of them were parent educators. Um, which are required by I E B, we just can't find them.
I think we have thirteen parent educators.
Thirteen parent educators.
I think it's more than fifteen.
Oh, yes, it might be like sixteen, seventeen, because I know we have a math, we have a. Science, we have. Um, music teacher.
Cool, English social studies.
Middle school, especially, and so, yeah, maybe it's closer to eighteen, twenty.
So we already have six.
Well, you have six unfilled positions, so that is the conversation though, right? Some of those, you may be able to make. You know, some sort of accommodation to, and some might be like. Yeah, we've gone without it, but it's really not been best practice.
No, I agree, I agree, I just, I would hate to cut six bodies with, and and not fill the unfilled positions.
Well, and that's not good for us either as a district, my opinion, because what all the young field positions have done is at the end of the year, we give back a bunch of money. And then you run into the whole, how does it go back, how's it, you know, that's a different conversation. So, why don't we have the admin sort of separate themselves into different corners, you may have to bring your chairs with you, yes, Jennifer.
Could you display the, the last information that you provided at our meeting with the counts? Of the, how many teachers versus students by grade and?
And can I display it, I can display it.
Missy must have it, or it never is, okay.
I'm not worried about having it, it's, I can only do one at a time, I think, so. Oh, I can, very nice, I'll send this to you Brendan, and I will try not to send it to myself. I will do it right now. This will be for the elementary, okay? And then if we need something else, I may do it if we do that.
So I think we were working off of that when we.
Yeah.
Were looking at.
Yeah, it's a snapshot of a. Place and time, but it's gonna be pretty close. Now what? Now all I have to do is find where. There you go, I think I just sent it to you. So, you guys wanna sort of get uprooted yourselves into places? And I think I would ask, it's, I mean, you can kind of separate yourself by attendance area. But if you're an at-large member or have a special interest in the high school, it might be nice for someone to go to the high school.
Lab is open, so I don't know if you wanna open day one or something.
Oh, nice, you'll have, and we'll do this until about seven forty and then come back. The goal is just to have a convers- oh, sorry, not some point, goal is to have the conversation about, so the recommendation was two teachers in each attendance area. Plus two at the high school, what that would do, what it would look like.
People, Justin.
But Justin, yeah, like Pink Day Rothy's open? Or they just could see if someone.
Whether they were drifted over here, that.
Yes.
Kind of, I think.
That's Walhall, no, that's Charlestown.
Cause I'm only gonna hear.
Walhall's over here. Me, like, oh, twelve years, I did my student teaching here. They do, in our main street.
Yeah, I think what I was looking at is we could.
I wasn't looking at.
Yeah.
But that, we have to reset. Cause there's probably, no, I was embarrassed.
So, hey Brendan? Can you pause? Till everyone comes back together.
There, in case somebody were to join or something.
Worked out on a broader perspective. Just wanted to make sure what happened with the numbers.
Yes, I was fine with these numbers, yeah, yeah, did you, did you sign off on it?
Every vault from everything where I thought it was.
You need to. Yes, you need to sign because you were on the community, so.
Well, thank you. I know, you believe it, we do, they're both. Welcome back. I. Have asked the admin to kind of join us so that we're not all turning our heads, they were speaking about them or with them or to them. Hopefully everyone found the opportunity to chat with them to be helpful, but I think what might be helpful for the rest of us. Is just to sort of report out. Kind of how the conversation went, if there were any sort of, like, everyone agreed to something. And go from there, so why don't we start, because I'm just looking at the two of you, why don't we start with Chris and Cory?
So are we reporting out or are people reporting out?
Well, I think you can both report out depending on who feels like going first. It is the board meeting, so I could see if the board member who was there from that group wanted to report out. So who would that be for you, Alyssa?
Thank you. Um, yes, because Shelley wasn't there, I jumped into Charlestown and this is something we've been talking about in fact, at least anyway, so it's a. An appreciated conversation. Um, so I just, I really do appreciate that the creativity that Cory. And Chris just brought to this conversation, it's not what I was expecting, so. Um, what they actually are looking for next year would have added a position, so when they reconfigured it, they actually are three less than what they were expecting to be next year. But it would be pretty major, it would take Charlestown from being. Um, the North Charlestown School with grades one, one grade of each, one through fifth, then the primary school with. Three kindergartens and then two of every other grade of one through five, and then the sixth grade of the middle school. And put K to three at Charlestown Primary School. Um, four and five at North Charlestown. And then, of course, six through eight at the middle school still. Because there's a small class right now in second and third grade. We would reduce from three total classes to two next year for the third and fourth grade of those classes moving forward, so. In essence, it would be two classroom teachers. But this configuration also allows us to be more efficient for special ed. And instead of adding a position next year, we could stay at seven specialized teachers and be more efficient in several avenues there. So. I appreciate this whole plan and I. Wonder if anybody has questions.
The other thing you discussed though was transportation and how they could make that work. With a staggered schedule. And then any kids coming in from the outer reaches that have to go to north would change like they do now, similar to Alston dependent area, like they used to change at the. School and then ride out.
It would need to be discussed definitely with transportation, but also with staggering the start times and changing those probably. So, that needs a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of logistical things and also political will things, right, you know, I mean, it's important. That if you make such a substantive change, that everyone's behind it. Who has decision-making authority, cause otherwise, cause you know not everyone's gonna love it.
Uh, well, that's a given, I know, you know, being.
Having obvious, I'm happy to help.
Being in the community in Charlestown, it has been a big conversation. For parents, especially moving from kindergarten first grade and then splitting, but how they all wanna stay together, and so I think there is a movement in the community towards this type of thing. So I. I'm not gonna say that out loud, so I'll hold on to that, but um. I think the conversation in the community will be worth having.
Okay.
I also think it's been done before. They've successfully done it before, yeah, there's growing pains in making the decision, nothing's ever easy, right? When it's different, but I think where the children would also gain is that you're putting the whole entire. Grade together from the beginning of when they're coming in, you know, and they'll grow together and and. You know, they'll have friends from kinder or first right on up through whether they want them or not, but you know. That's, I think it's a beautiful thing.
Any, any other thoughts or comments relative to the discussion in the Charlestown attendance area?
The only other thing was special ed, we talked about reconfiguring, we still have seven specialized teachers. Three with CPS, three with them via CMS, middle school, and one would be at north. Due to the numbers, we think we can make that work.
Well, and some of these things too, if the numbers change, you don't know, it might require an additional special ed teacher or not, but that can happen no matter what.
Right, we never know who's gonna be there or not.
I'm not sure how the argument, discussion was framed today, I apologize, um, our boys team lost at the buzzer. And I was a little bit wrapped up in that basketball game, so sorry for being late, but I think it's important to note that. Under our current configuration, we cannot cut positions. There are no positions to cut under current configuration, so if we're looking to reduce positions in order to reduce the budget. There's a, there, there's a consequence to that, I'm not saying the consequence is positive or negative, but there's a, an effect of that and that is having to reconfigure in order to be able to accomplish this. I think that needs to be explicit.
Alright, alright, um. Who wants to show that? Dale? Thanks for agreeing.
Which we're. It's a good segue into the Charlestown attendance area conversation because we also have the problem of not having anyone. No spares. We have one teacher for every grade and we have one teacher for every subject at the middle school, so we were talking about some reconfiguration options as well. They will be, also be very difficult and. We, we've asked the administration to go back and look at the possibility of making Sarah Porter be like one, two. And Alston primary being three, four, or whatever configuration of that works. How would that work with, with special ed and with transportation and with everything else and that mix? The other option then is to combine a class or two at Alston primary, because there's no other way to, you can't make one teacher perform grades back, backward for Sarah Porter.
Right.
And then, and then reduce the grades that are at backward in Sarah Porter and that, the idea of reducing grades. Backwards is already reduced down quite a bit from what we originally, and we, we, the. We, the, the citizens of backwards actually built a room on backwards with citizen labor. Um, to keep our fifth graders there and, um, we don't have them, there's just not enough kids in the, in the district and not enough kids in the town to, um, to keep that, that, um, that. Our fifth graders there, um, and the idea too is to have our kindergarteners stay there too, but there was an issue with the elevator, so that never happened. So, um, I, I know that, that it has gone to our, to our voters once before to reduce our numbers even more or to close the school completely and there was a. Quite a hue and cry at that point and the taxpayers, I thought they were gonna turn feather Steve at that point, but you know. He's still here, yeah, he's still smiling at me, so that's good, but, um. He, um, there was, there were, um, there was, the, uh, the select board actually stated that we would, that the taxpayers would pay the, pay whatever the difference was that we would keep our kids. Um, so, um, it was, it was pretty clear then, but you know, that was as was stated, um, quite a few years ago and you know, it needs to be, it does need to be looked at again and so. And let people make a decision as to what needs to happen, because we, we need to take a look at what, what is happening, but, um. That's, that was what we were talking about.
And the other concern about trying to use Sarah Porter as first and second grade is space. Each of those classrooms is about five hundred and seventy square feet and we want to determine if we have enough square footage for the number of students that would be coming in. I believe there is a statute that says.
Are you talking about moving the Alston primary kids to Akron?
No, no, Sarah Porter.
I'm sorry, to Sarah Porter, okay.
Just.
Well, I.
I'm not making, asking the administration to look into it and see if it's possible.
Thirty-six.
There's been more students in Sarah Porter than those numbers combined in the years I worked here.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
Yeah, and, and just as I'm gonna echo what Cory said. There's a consequence and we, we have one. Okay, continue. We have one specialized teacher that is split between Alston Primary and Akron and then, and then a second one that's split between. Alston Primary and Sarah Porter. And we're seeing more needs and I can see a specialized teacher needing to spend more time at. At, you know, the smaller school and I don't know how like that's budgeted, but then there would be someone lacking at. At the bigger schools, I just think, you have to take a really long, hard look at it. Also the tuition differences and I know in the past that the towns really want their schools, so it's good to open the conversation, but I know there's. There's some reservations, I feel, on how this would academically be best for this.
Alright, anything else?
There are a bunch of them soon there.
Yeah, I don't have others, yeah.
I mean, at least in my opinion, it, it's listening to what Charlestown has proposed and listening to what the Alston attendance area has proposed, we, we are. Um, way behind on the conversation on that, we need to do a lot more legwork to figure out what. We can afford to do and what we can't as far as tuition goes, is there any way to merge that, figure out how to get these tuitions closer to each other? Um, I mean, all these discussions need to be had before we even. Begin to decide to, to close one of these schools or make that change. Or make that change that you're talking about to put all of the first and second graders into, um, into Sarah Porter, whatever, you know.
Yeah, whatever the conversation was that you guys had.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, um, it's just, we're not, we're not anywhere near as close as what Charlestown is.
I think one thing that, that we do need to keep in mind throughout all of the discussions is that if we are talking about cutting professional teaching positions. That does not mean that we cut a, a professional teaching position and replace it with a parent educator. Because that, that. That is counterintuitive. And, and so if we, and we need to think about that for the future, that, that if we cut, if we cut position now, it doesn't mean that, that, um, that next year we say, oh, well, we're gonna, we need more pairs. Um, because if, if we need something more, we need enough, we need to replace the professional. Because, um, if our number, if our, if our. Results aren't where, where we want them to be and we cut people, professionals now, and our results continue to not be where we want them to be, then we need to look closely at, why is that? And, um, and do we, did, did that cut in professionals affect that? And, um, and then if it did, then remedy that, so.
Right, Justin, where are you, you're somewhere here.
Alright, so if our task was to go into this meeting, looking where we could cut a teacher, a faculty, we failed on that task. What we did, I thought, succeed on is coming up with a possible plan for the future of consolidation. And, you know, eliminating some positions. The, the class sizes in Walhall are reasonably small, but. Any consolidation is, just like the other, the tenants area said, is gonna require further study and find out what the repercussions are gonna be. As far as special ed state, whatever, I don't know what. You know, Justin was pretty adamant that Walhall's in a good place right now. Class sizes are correct, the test scores are good and. There's no place to cut a staff member at present. We did talk about consolidating classes. You know, consolidating grade levels. Like Sarah Porter does. And would it be possible, and of course, anything is possible. But we didn't get there, Steve brought up a lot of good historical points and talked about. Enrollments, the high point, how much we've lost over the years, yet the cost haven't followed suit. And that's for a number of reasons, you know, obviously, you would like it to follow suit, but costs these days are a lot more expensive than they were ten, twenty years ago. Um, in staff alone, and you know, we're gonna have another agreement on the warrant this year. That doesn't help the thirty-four, five million dollar budget, you know, and we're gonna keep adding a half million dollars a year just on wage increases. So I think that we're gonna have further conversations. We, the three of us, there's only three in our group, thought that it would be pretty cool in the future, near future. To consolidate the students to one campus in Walhall.
I think that's the one thing we truly agreed on. Is that Walhall attendance area would be a better attendance area if we're just in the two buildings. And that North Walhall get repurposed. For potentially a central office or for a special ed centralized district-wise special ed resource or something of that nature. We eliminate kids coming from the Surrey line, having to go all the way to North Walhall, including a bus transfer at Walhall Middle School to achieve it. Something of that nature, we eliminate kids coming from the Surrey line, having to go all the way to North Wall Pole, including a bus transfer at Walpole Middle School to achieve it. Now with the Surrey line, the Westbourne line, kids as young as second grade doing that is, is not great. Your specials are spending time in their car when they could be spending time with kids, music, gym, art, et cetera, et cetera. The principal is spending time in the car when he could be spending time on, you know, on the campus and just walking from one building to the other. That, that without question is the one thing we agreed on is that we'd be a better system. We also agree that, that the back of Walpole primary is absolutely ripe for an addition if necessary. We own the land, it's flat as a pancake, it's just, just continue, it's, it's, it's site ready. You know, the sewer system, you don't have to worry about septic.
Oh, that's great.
It, it's. Putting an addition on the back of Walpole primary is, is so easy. We've looked at it before and just not done it, but we've looked at it, we know it's easy to do. Um, and if that's necessary, there's no question in my mind that people at Walpole would support the money to do it. So the question is. How, how do we get moving in that direction? Where do we find some compromise here? The, the issue really is average class size, we, we, and Andy alluded to some history. Um, talking about all the elementary schools, turn of the century, fifteen hundred students today, a little more than nine hundred students, tremendous volume decline. We, we've dropped from about twenty-two students in a class down to about thirteen point seven. To maintain a standard of thirteen point seven, if the six hundred kids move back in, you'd need forty-three classrooms and forty-three more teachers. Do you think you'd build forty-three more classrooms and hire forty-three more teachers? Or do you think you'd do something else? And what would that something else be? You would escalate back upwards towards twenty, twenty-two kids in a class, it's the only choice you really have. So the question then becomes what dictates average class size, happenstance, circumstance, you know, just where we are today? Or are we making some conscious decisions as to? There's no question that smaller class sizes produce a better outcome. I won't argue that with you. The question is value for money. Fourteen, thirteen or fourteen kids in class opposed to twenty-one is a third more cost? Are they coming out a third smarter? Are they making a third more income when they graduate? I don't think so. I think there's some incremental value, but you know, it's, it's like walking into a car dealership and there's two cars available. One's got a premium stereo system, one doesn't, otherwise they're redundant. Premium stereo system's a forty thousand dollar car, the one without is a thirty thousand dollar car. Which one's the better car? The forty thousand dollar car with the premium stereo system? Which one's the better value for money? That's what we gotta start looking at here is value for money. We can't stick our head in the sand and simply say any incremental. Educational gain is worth any amount of money to achieve it. And I think that's what's happened over the last twenty, thirty years is no matter what we look at, as long as it's good. What's good for children? My God, I hope everything we do here is good for children. I hope we're not wasting money doing things that are not good for children at all. But where's the second test? Is it worth the money? How much, if, if you walked in and said I can increase SAT scores by two points next year, what's it worth? Two million dollars, four million dollars? At what point would you say, don't be ridiculous, I'm not spending four million dollars to increase SAT points by two? It's not worth the money. That's what we need to start looking at. Is it worth the money? And that's an uncomfortable conversation, I know that. If, if this were private school and you had to raise your tuition to maintain this and you're losing students right and left? You'd be at risk of closing the door. The, the discipline that's missing here is that market discipline. You know, we, we don't have to be efficient, let's be honest, we don't have to be cost efficient because we can't go out of business. A business that's not cost efficient goes out of business, it gets pushed out by its competitors, but that doesn't happen in public schools, so. That's all I'm asking to look at is, is. Is it, is it in fact worth the money and can, you know, can we achieve almost as good results and not? Have to always be spending that every last night, who would you be?
It's nice to hear you're still saying the same thing, Stephen. So I just have a question with Walpole's numbers, so I can help me understand this. So on this enrollment projection, which I'm assuming is correct. Um, it says at North Wall Pole, we're going to look at, this is an enrollment projection for next year. Twenty-one in second grade, thirty-three in third and thirty-four in fifth. Yeah, okay, so one more in, in third, okay. And so up here. Did I read it wrong? Says there's eight teachers? I'm just looking at what it says there. So that's incorrect.
For this year?
Yeah, we have six grade level teachers and then we have one specialist.
This is twenty-two, twenty-three.
And a reading specialist.
Yeah, I, this is twenty-two, twenty-three.
So you're gonna, so you're projecting six for that school for next year?
Yeah.
Okay, so this will change. So did we get at one of these for a projection of next year?
I believe you did. I just sent Brendan what I had on my desktop, I didn't look at it carefully.
Okay, all right, well, that makes me feel better, thank you.
Well, that's what we're about.
Thinking if we have eight years, that makes, yes, a problem, okay. And then there's five for the primary cell?
Yes.
Okay, and then eight makes sense at the fourth grade level, two, two and four. So if there's eight and eight and five this year. Where the.
So there, the eight at North Volko is, is must be included with special ed and our reading specialist. We only have six grade.
Gotcha, thank you.
So what we got for Walpole Elementary?
That was you guys, you have, so that's, it's split, so.
So there would be eight, yeah, cause two per class.
Yeah, right. Okay, it's not really right, is it?
So for like sixth grade, that, that's your ask, right? For like sixth grade, so I have two fifth grade teachers. And then for sixth grade, I have four. And then you have one, two, three, three teachers that take, that teach six through eight. So they're, they're doing all six through eight and then I have two teachers that are teaching seventh and eighth, so in total. Six, I have seven teachers. And then you have our UA teacher, which then makes it the eight, but that goes the one that wrote in for the. Each of that.
It's just the model, the mixed model.
You have two in fifth grade, it makes sense. And then you've got six teachers in total covering the other three grades.
No, I have four teachers covering sixth grade because I have an ELA teacher, a reading teacher. The what?
How many, how many teachers?
For sixth grade.
How many human bodies are we employing to cover grades six, seven and eight?
So six, seventh and eighth, you have six, and then you add.
Yeah, but then you have the two for fifth and that one. So we've got six teachers in grade six, seven and eight servicing eighty-one children. That's what we've got. My contention is, my contention is if you did that with five, it's the left sixth grade of the class. I don't, I understand that. It's just a question of how you structure, how you look at the services.
Like we talked about, you would have to, to.
But if you had no choice but to do it differently, you'd do it differently, it's not like.
ESL, the English Second Language Program in your school?
ESL for.
ELL students.
You don't have anybody.
Okay, not, not, not at the elementary school.
Didn't you say you had a teacher there that was teaching them? Okay.
Do we want to move to the high school and then circle back to other things? Who was the high school talker, Gabe?
Sure, uh, we had a discussion, Steve D'Alessio and I sat down with the principal and vice principal of the high school, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, there are some ideas considered, uh, there are currently four unfilled positions. Uh, math, science, special ed and choir. Uh, to reduce, uh, teacher inquire would reduce the program. So that one is um wishes to be filled and the special ed teacher. Has a caseload of typically fifteen to twenty students, works with guidance plans, plans for those students, four-year plans. Uh, so that's a very important uh critical position for the special education students that receive those services. Uh, but the math and science could be adjusted. It would increase class sizes, it would be uncomfortable, but it's something that could be looked at. There are some other ideas. Perhaps, and, and with the caveat that it would require more discussion. But we could look back into an eight-period day, seven class, seven classes per day. As far as class counts, which would be a district-wide restructuring. Looking at an eighth grade absorption into the high school. This building at its maximum was, what Steve, eleven, eleven hundred?
This, this building?
Yeah.
Uh, we peeked here, I think, seven, twelve.
Seven, twelve.
But the building was designed for.
The building was designed for about six fifty.
That's one?
It was designed.
When it was built.
When it was built, nineteen sixty-six, it was spec to support six hundred and fifty students.
We currently have four hundred and eighty-five in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're projecting four ninety-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're down to four fifty-seven. And that includes uh students, about twelve to twenty students from Goshen, Lemster and Unity tuitioned in. There are two teachers retiring this year, those will be replaced, those are especially programs. That we want to keep on the program, the program of studies. Uh, we also had a discussion about V-Lax and that there are some courses transferable. That is an option for students, though it's a technically a charter school.
So, I'm, I'm just a little bit curious, I heard tomorrow discussion at the building's capacity today was a lot more than that. It was like eleven hundred students, eleven hundred people. Did I mishear that Tom or?
No, I, I think that's what I was told, at the peak back in the eighties, it was like eleven hundred students.
Yeah, I'm gonna look back at all the enrollment, I'm gonna pull off the.
Anyway, so I'll just give you my.
Try to get some.
Whatever, that was the number I heard, I guess it's been validated that I heard that number. Okay, but. If this was a business, if this was a business and we were truly treating it as a business, we'd be looking at a way to shut down. At least twenty-five or thirty percent of this building and save utility costs and everything else. I don't know. Dom, you felt it could not be done, but I still think if, if, if those numbers are right. That's one thing that we should seriously look at, or as we suggested for the long term, move the eighth grade students to this building. Cause there could be enough capacity in it to handle everything. So.
Yeah, I think, I, if I may, I think Gabe had mentioned, you know. And a couple other voices too, there are short-term discussions.
And long-term.
Probably better for longer term.
Absolutely.
This might be a better longer term and, you know, we all get to decide what that is. You know, what I hate is when longer term becomes never term. You know, so it's important to sort of put a caveat around that.
Uh, one, while we're, while we're having it at front of discussion, uh, one. Benefit of absorbing an eighth grade into the high school would be the opportunity for advanced courses. There are, I think, when I was in this system, there were many eighth graders who would bust to the high school in the morning. For, say, an algebra, algebra course, so that would open up the opportunity for any course. For advanced students. One thing to keep in mind.
I've worked in some districts that are six, twelve, uh, one building and another nice part, if you ever go that route. Is it allows the eighth graders to do like pre-CT classes. And to figure out, you know, they do a rotation through all of them. And that's, you know, they can figure out what they like, what they don't like, so that when they get to high school, they try it out, animal science or horticulture or whatever. That's a benefit to. So. It sounds to me. That the high school level in the Charlestown attendance area level. Have some ideas that might be a little more firm and thought through overtime, whether through sight chase or. Through other mechanisms, whereas Walpole and Alston, it sounds like there are some possibilities, but there's more thinking that they would. Might be helpful and there were certainly announced that there are a whole host of. Factors that would come into play, right? Cause you have the whole tuition grade discussion, you have all of those types of things. Are there things that as a budget committee and as a school board? That you would either want to further discuss individually or are there things that the group could come to an agreement? On so that as a. As a district, we could make whatever, take whatever steps we need to do to, let it make these things happen.
I think there was a request for some of the background information for line item.
Yeah, there.
Uh, for expenses, so I think that would be very helpful as well unless there's any um. Anybody from the school board side has a comfort level with decreasing any expenses.
I think the challenge we're having with that, it's not, it's not undoable, but it's not the way that it had been done previously necessarily. So we've gone back, I know Mary's gone back to each of the admin, who have then had to go back to each of their. Admin assistants or secretaries, I think, in most cases and try to get that information. Cause it's not how it was reported in the system, is that accurate?
Yes, and I've got a lot of them, I just haven't.
I think the other thing, and you, I think you mentioned this in your email, Gabe, and I think it's important to keep in mind. There's. Big money items, right? Things that make a big difference. And that tends to be staffing and it tends to be, the other big item that is probably. Hanging out there is the tuition that we paid at River Valley and Springfield because they don't. Get the same benefit from the state as King. Once you get beyond those things, you are talking about peanuts. Or in a, I mean, in a thirty million dollar sense of peanuts, and so. At a certain point, the district needs to be able to order their sticky tape and their post-its and their. Graphing calculators. And should be able to do that if they're making, in my, if they're making a good bait effort. To look at these other areas and to consider these longer-term things. I mentioned in my report out to the super, uh, superintendent, the school board, you know, I think we've met seven times. As a budget committee. Sometimes the superintendent gets confused and doesn't give you exactly what you're looking for, but he tries. You know, and Mary has tried to give us the information we like, so we're trying to gather that last piece for you, Jennifer. But it might take us a little bit, but it's also, I think, the small change of the matter. Um, personally, so. We made decisions as an admin team, which reduced, I think it was what, seven hundred thousand, something like that. Um, we've had some pretty in-depth discussions about. That, I mean, I'm probably not their favorite person, you know, staffing is where the money is. Consolidation configurations of schools, that's where the money is. And so we've started to have some of those discussions. If as a community of school board and budget committee, you can agree on the big stuff. You've made a lot more progress than you will otherwise, I think, so just my two cents.
What is the full percentage for staff, um, all staffs, union, non-union and benefits? Out of the thirty.
Do you have that?
I mean, I hear eighty percent.
Yeah, it's typically seventy, seventy, eighty, something like that.
Seventy-five, eighty, right?
Yeah, and then I think if you take like special education out of district type stuff, tuitions, you take utilities. You take transport, you take all those things, I was guessing today that you're probably around ninety percent of your budget. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less, which means that the rest of the stuff is like ten. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less, which means that the rest of the stuff is like ten percent.
So three million.
Three million and you're talking about athletics, you're talking about extracurriculars, you're talking about all the technology. You're talking about all those things, the supplies, but when you spread that amount out over eleven schools. You're not really talking about a lot of money. Um, again, in a thirty three million dollar discussion.
I had a neighbor call me and say that their um, one of their family members just started in high school and made the football team and he was told that the family has to contribute eight hundred dollars. Yeah, at the high school, this.
Not to my knowledge, do they?
Hopefully, that's just a rumor.
Athletic.
For.
Uh, no, that's a rumor, I think.
Rumor.
Now, I will tell you though, Jennifer, to be honest, there are some districts that charge us fee. That brings up huge equity concerns.
Absolutely.
Um, but no, I didn't believe we charged a fee, so I'm glad.
So no, uh, you don't have to buy your own uniforms or pay your own.
Sometimes people like fancy stuff and they might buy like jackets and things, I guess. I don't know if that's still a thing.
Yeah, sorry to to distract the group.
Oh, I'm easily.
Asking that, I, yeah.
I mean, it might be like a, like a, like a jacket or something like that.
Eight hundred dollar dollars.
Hey, hey, it depends.
My special shoes, special.
By by.
I'm sorry to distract the the group with that.
But the, you know, so. The elementary school still put out a a list of things that the kids need to bring to school with them?
Yeah, yeah, we, um, each classroom, um, teacher will put specifics, a lot of donations though. Um, the schools try to do the best that we can to have those supplies on hand. Um, and speaking for Walpole, the university programs and everything around does a great job of donating a lot of them.
Yeah, I know.
To our schools.
I I was gonna say that, then, you know, that, you know.
A lot of the things.
We do a lot of that to support the school.
Yes, an interesting concept, though, right? In terms of equity again.
Well, the 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 argument that I hear from the taxpayers is all the time is that we've got a thirty plus million dollar budget and you can't, you're forcing my kid to buy pencils and paper and tissues.
And I I have to tell you that my my sister put her kids through school in the Chicago area and every year she would have to pay out an enormous amount of money that was just expected and they paid a lot more taxes than we did.
And Justin and I, we had a conversation a couple of years ago when you were a teacher.
Yeah.
About how little money the teachers get to to buy extra things going on and that led me to ask Jim, Ben, why can't Walpole as a town contribute more to their budget for that specific purpose than anything else? And at the time I was told it couldn't be done, but that doesn't mean that can't be done.
But and I'm sure everyone knows the amount of money that teachers spend on of their own.
My wife's a teacher, so I know.
So. How would people like to proceed? I guess I would. Well, you know, I I appreciate hearing from the administration. And I want them to be active children. I want to watch you here if you weren't. You know, so. You know, I expect to hear just what I heard. And and that's a good thing. We all have a role and we're all over here is to balance the interest. Uh, you know, we heard about the taxpayer, this is the taxpayer, that. I don't want to focus on just the taxpayer. I want to balance the interest. And and, you know, we we can't just make the taxpayers happy because they want to pay less and we can't spend every last dime on education that we have. The kids won't be around more than a couple of weeks and they don't need a job and they'll feed them. So, you know, somewhere in between the two is is the right place to be. And it's just a question of finding that spot. Uh, uh, we talked about, uh, you know, the one place we might have appointed teachers combining first grade. So God, don't go down there. That's the most, that's the best value for money is first grade, second grade. You you, that's that's their foundation. It's, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna save some money, it's it's how many times have I heard it's it's a lot more cost effective to spend it early than it does to try and do remediation on the back end. It's so true. So true. So, you know, we also, we also have to be looking at where we're trying to save money. Uh, but I think we all can agree we'd be a lot better off on that campus, even if it requires an addition to do it. And I would vote for that in heart. Um, so it's just a question of can we do some damage control here? So, you know, we only have so much space. Probably build maybe six classrooms. I think that's probably about it. And of course, the more you build, I don't know if they're a classroom now, but then I see they're not, um, so. I think Walpole would support it, but to a point, um, so.
I think the big thing is as long as, just speaking for Walpole, as long as they hear our point, I think, as long as we're not rushing into things and in making drastic decisions, I think that's the biggest, if there's a plan and they're involved, I think you will get a ton more support across the attendance area for Walpole. Absolutely.
But you can't, I agree. But.
Well, you know, I also, um, I'm hearing that people aren't happy with, um, with the, uh, with the performance of our students on the, um, on the state tests and you know, on big tests and where they, where our students are academically and two things on that. One is that we we're still recovering, we're, we are still recovering from COVID. Um, that that hit us hard and, um, we're, we are still recovering from that, but, um, no, we, we used to be really good with our numbers and so it would maybe we can hear from our curriculum coordinator in terms of what we're doing in terms of our, in terms of making sure that we are recovering and what what is happening so that we are recovering.
Well, I think that's one of the things that we've been working on, obviously, over the last few couple of years is um, relooking at our K two literacy, when we added on that three, four piece. Um, and looking at not just reading, but looking at writing as well. We did, uh, uh, we've offered a lot of different training to our elementary teachers on foundations. Uh, we brought Hagerty into the district, which is phonological awareness. Um, we, uh, um, have offered training on, um, Horton Gillingham, uh, to teachers. Um, we sent them out for that training. Um, a number of our teachers are going to be taking, um, letters training uh, through the state, um, department of education. We have a couple of teachers that are enrolled in the first cohort. We have more that have signed up for the second cohort. Um, and then in terms of, uh, math, we've, uh, we offered, um, O gap training, which is the ongoing assessment project. Uh, we've been sending teachers to that training. Excuse me, in other districts, um, for the last several years, but this year we hosted um, our first training in district. Um, and we did additive reasoning. So next year I'd like to have a second training, um, for the elementary schools and then have a third training more towards the middle school. Excuse me, I apologize. Um, so, uh, those are definitely different pieces that we've been working on in the last couple of years, even with the pandemic going on. Um, but we certainly have work that needs to be done. And a lot of that was stalled. We had done quite a bit of work on our competencies, on unpacking those into our grade level expectations um, and student level expectations, but with the pandemic, we couldn't pull groups of teachers together. Um, and so that's when we started to have more grade level conversations across the district.
That's the question. Yes. So, um, something I could ask on a regular basis is whether we have consistent standards grade wise throughout the district. Uh, I hear you say that we have a lot of programs for K to two. So are those all used in every K to two classroom or are those kind of like picked and chosen between whichever classroom the teacher have a redup of the link?
So in terms of a core reading program, we do not have a core reading program across the district. That is why we started the work two years ago, um, on that, on that piece, is looking at a core reading program. We do have a core math program, which was implemented, um, the first year that I arrived. That's the math and focus program. Um, but a a lot of that material is outdated and needs to be revisited. And we were supposed to start that process before the pandemic. And then that, you know, what happened? Um, in terms of standards, yes, they are standard across the district in terms of um, uh, uh, reading, writing and math and science. Um, social studies is something that we do need to start working on, uh, because, uh, the state was talking about doing some work and then that kind of petered out and we were waiting for that work to be done so that we could take that and then say, okay, how does this work with what we're currently doing in district?
Okay, so this, um, if I might, um, the K two program for reading and writing that we're looking to include in this current budget would then be rolled out district wide?
So we are not looking at doing a core reading program. We are only looking, so right now we use Hagerty. So for K two, we use Hagerty. And that's our phonological awareness. Um, and that is in.
So by saying you use it, what does that mean?
So it means that we we purchased those instructional materials and we're using that, um, uh, to to address follow-up awareness across the district.
Can you say what that means? To, I mean, because not everyone here is an educator, is that, and some of us are math people, I know I've asked you before, but phonological awareness is what?
So phonological awareness is understanding what the sound is and what the sound, what the letter is to the sound and how the sound is made. Um, so what the letter looks like, what sound it makes, and then how it's connected. Um, we use foundations, um, and, um, for our phonics, um, as well as vocabulary. Um, and there's a piece that I'm forgetting right now, that foundations is.
What is phonics?
So. Um, so, um, so phonics has been another, so phonics builds on phonological awareness and so um, phonics is the way that sounds work together, um, and then how those make words. So if you know the rules around how those sounds are made in and together, then you can then decode the word um, and read the word.
So could I give an, is it like F fat or B bird or something like that? You learn the sound, then you learn to say, uh.
Right, that makes more sense. Uh, I'm wondering actually if I was mistaken. Are we doing a K to two math?
No, no, so I'll let me explain what.
So, okay, so.
Or you.
So in our conversation, in our conversation, um, based on conversations that you, that the budget committee has had um, concerns around the amount of money, we decided to scale back. So originally, this school year, we wanted to look at the core reading program, um, which we would have also, um, and we were looking at two different programs. One of the programs builds in, um, they have their own decodables and then the other program um, has decodables that are attached to that program and those are called geodes. Um, and so we made the decision as an administrative team that we would go ahead and purchase the codeables, um, and focused on geodes um, and bring those in because those are aligned to foundations. Okay, and regardless of whether or not our core reading program that we then select eventually, if that program, um, is is not the one that's aligned to foundations or geodes, we'd still be able to use those decodables.
And that's where the hundred fifty thousand dollars comes in.
So the hundred fifty thousand dollars is for decodables and I believe that we'll need to be purchasing some additional foundations um, in some of our classes that we've identified that don't have full sets. Um, but then we also talked about, um, doing some, um, additional math training. Um, so looking at doing, um, uh, this, the state has worked with New Hampshire Learning Initiative, also known as NHLI to offer O gap training. Um, that's been free to teachers. But if that funding disappears, then we'd like to offer that O gap training and pay for that in in ourselves. But I'm also looking at Intel Math Training, um, which is an intensive math training, uh, in math, it's, uh, for for teachers over two weeks.
And that money was coming out of a grant.
Yeah.
So originally we had, I think it was what, three fiftyish?
Three eighty five.
Three eighty five in the budget for a reading program and a math program.
And a writing program.
And a writing program. We took that out because of concerns about the size of the budget and also the process, to be honest.
Okay.
And we decided that a good kind of intermediary step would be to do what Christian has said regarding the, yeah, the.
The decodables.
The decodables, which are basically books that allow you to make those sound readable.
Which is, and they're all based on a specific, um, a a specific uh, skill that students are working on. So there's not three or four different um, phonics pieces in a book until they're ready for that. Okay, so which, if I may, um, are we continuing to study where we have gaps and looking for programs that match those gaps so that probably when we're discussing this budget next year, we'll be discussing this again? So the literacy committee is continuing to meet, as is the middle school math committee. They will continue to be this school year. Um, they are aware of the change I did, um, and asked Dr. Menahand for permission to let those committees know where we were after the last round of budget cuts. Um, and so we will continue to meet this year.
Okay, yes. So going back to, you know, those test scores and whatnot, it looks to me like we have some gaps that shouldn't be addressed. So I'm just glad to know that going forward, we are. Okay.
No.
You have an RTI, um, committees in each of the schools so that you pull up when when you have when you have kids who are struggling at different levels, you pull them up.
You do.
And and you can address them with tier one, tier two supports.
Yeah.
Before they reach tier three.
Principals all have that in their bills.
Well, sorry, I was, I was having a private conversation. RTI is response to intervention. And so, um, with response to intervention, where to make it really work, you have to have active teams in each of the different, um, in each of the different buildings that that look, that are basically data teams. Um, we used to have really strong data teams in this district, um, that that and they, that kind kind of petered for a while. I'm not sure if those data teams are strong again or not, but, um, that would look regularly at, um, uh, at students' progress and be between and after the state testings and say, okay, who's our students who are in tier one, they're doing they are in tier three, whichever, if you go, this is one or that is one, but who are who are in your main big group and they're doing pretty well, we're doing okay, they're still in, they're still doing pretty well. Then th- these are ones that are bubbling up into two, they're starting to have some difficulties. What can we do to get them back down into tier one and, um, or down into the, into the big, into the big group that is doing okay? What interventions do we need so that we don't, because if, again, just like if you put your efforts towards grade one, grade two, grade three, um, if you work on kids as they first start to bubble up and get the interventions in, then you don't have to go all the way to having a special plan and a special business, special that, except for the kids who really, really need that. So. So that's what, it's it's kind of shaped like a triangle because the idea is that you're you don't have as many, you have most of your kids that are functioning down here at the, that are doing pretty well um, and functioning and doing, you know, getting it with just kind of by drinking the juice, you know, and then you have some of your kids who need it a different way. And then you have some, you need it maybe an even a little differently, and then you have a very small number who need it significantly different. Um, and, um.
And so when you, when you look at the triangle, and we can certainly have more conversation about this, but when you look at the triangle, um, tier one is your core instruction. And so eighty percent of your students should be in your tier one. Um, really, and they, and so it in core instruction, the expectation is that eighty percent of those students would be receiving that instruction and would be on grade level. And then your tier two is the, um, is is targeted um, intervention. So you have those students that might not, you know, they might be a little bit behind and they need a little bit of support. That's where our reading specialists are. Um, that's where our academic interventionists are. And then when we're looking at tier three, that's really where our special ed services are. We could certainly have more conversation around, um, those pieces. I think that would be a good thing for us to do.
Gabe, what's the I know that the budget committee is meeting Saturday, I don't think it is.
Correct.
And what's sort of the hope and the outcome of that? Because I guess I'm trying to figure out what this body would need to think about today versus I know there was some conversation about from the budget committee anyways, about possibly having the board meet again next Monday. The school board. And so I'm just trying to understand where or help us all understand that where things are headed.
Uh, end game is to finalize a.
Our end game is to finalize a collaborative line item budget proposal. Before Christmas break, ready for January twelfth is the budget hearing. If your board was able to meet on the nineteenth. Uh, we believe after our full day on the seventeenth that we'd have a proposal to go with. Given, and I'll preface that, that we are waiting on backup data. On some individual line items in the, in the, the. Steve, you had a name for it, that used to be in the back of the, was it the digest?
Index.
Dave, can I interject? So, we asked about that earlier, I know you sent an email. Um, Brendan said that that's requiring a lot of work, which I don't understand why. Um, I'm assuming that the principals are still building their budgets the same way they did when I left. Which means that you would be somehow gathering data. From all of your teams or department heads or leads or however you do it, or you're just. Simply saying, I've got this many kids in a class and you each get however much money for each kid in the class. I mean, there's a billion different ways to do it, right? But there's some thought process behind each one of the lines. That you all put into the budget, because there used to be when I was here before. And so that's what, and it was when Steve was here for twenty years, that's how they were built, that data was shared with the boards. Um, it wasn't always shared in its entirety, when I left, I think some of the AAs were putting the data into the. System under the different locations, instead of having to paper it up, right, that. Each one of your teachers fills out with their requests and you go, yeah, 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 no, yeah, no, whatever, however you do it, right? So we're not asking for you to recreate a wheel. Or for anybody to do any other work than other maybe, than otherwise maybe asking, this is what the budget committee is asking for. Is for you to just gather whatever document you use to build the budget and scan them and send the file. Right, that is, doesn't have to be pretty, doesn't have to be organized, doesn't have to be an Excel spreadsheet, doesn't have to be anything other than that.
And and that's what we're compiling, they were, I sent them an email late Friday, because I got an email from Gabe. And I said we need a few days to put it together because it was the weekend and.
Okay, I just didn't want you to recreate.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not recreating, they have been sending me their information.
If there was, you know, if it was still in the system, pulling that report off of the system like I sent.
It's it's in there under notes, but it's not in the account notes, that's the problem with it right now.
Um, I just wanna, I mean.
But can I ask a question?
Well, I just. The gathering of eight hundred additional pages is not nothing. And the amount of time that this group has spent gathering information, it's well worth it, it's good stuff. But it's not nothing, you know, I mean, it takes a lot of time and effort to get this information. So that we can give it to the board, just because it was done twenty years ago or fifteen years ago, doesn't mean that that was how Mary set it up. And so I just, I I just want the budget committee to know how much work. Mary especially, but others have been doing to put into this. You know, the request about the enrollment, it's not a bad request, but it hadn't been done for like ten years. And so we went, we did it, it takes time though, so all the time that we're spending doing this. This time we're not spending doing other things, which is fine, right, we're just starting out as a group, but. But it's just, we're doing our best to get you what you want, I think we've tried to be very responsive. Sometimes I forget things and I appreciate when people write me back and say, I wrote this to you. But I think we have displayed a degree of transparency, which is very high. And we've taken into account your concerns and the board's concern, so. I just, you know, I want to put that out there, because it sounds like sometimes it's like, oh, well, you didn't give us this thing. We're trying, so.
Okay, so poor choice of words, I apologize.
Oh, it's fine, I just had to put it out there, I'm sorry.
Fine. Yes, okay, so sorry, those, I had a follow up to the, there's a question, so. If it's account notes and so the line item notes or vice versa, it can still be pulled off the system. But so, so I'm just hoping that we could save them from doing the work, is my point.
I know for CAA, Chris and I did an Excel, it was the Google version, it's sheets, but it has. Tabs for every grade level, so we just, I turned mine into a PDF before I sent them, because they could be easier to follow, so. That's just what we shared, I didn't pull anything out of the accounting system, we just shared the, the documents that we use.
And when you look at the accounting system, it doesn't easily able to take Excel and paste two columns in simultaneously. So you only typically get in the notes, the items that go along with it, not always the dollar though, so the Excel sheet. Would be a little easier to follow and manipulate.
And I think we did both, our spreadsheet is a working copy draft, the numbers don't match with the I D, but she also put notes into I D.
Okay, so it sounds like that's coming along, okay, and we just got, we got the request on Friday, and so it's coming along. Your meeting is on Saturday, right?
Right, here.
It'd be at the Charleston Community Rooms. Changed.
Okay. It's important for morning, that meeting, it's at the Charleston Community Room.
Correct, underneath the Solsbury Library.
Um, I did have, um, a community member that asked, um. Where the notes, where the reading notes are being posted from your, from your committee.
They're all online.
They're all online, my progress.
Under committees.
Is there anything else that anyone wants to, um, fills that they would like to? Do we want to set a meeting for Monday then?
The board wants it, they definitely should.
That that would make sense for us to do that, so. Um, do I hear, uh, we need a motion, right, to set a meeting, set a special meeting? No, okay, I'm gonna set a special meeting, so it's to do it without a motion, how about that?
So next level.
Yes.
Okay, here, yes.
Yeah, what time?
It's during Dragon Race trip. These things stick in my head. All right, good. There, all right. Consent agenda, um, okay, so from what was on your agendas, we took off one policy. The policy. Suicide prevention. I have no idea what the number is. Do I hear?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Wait here a second. All right, a discussion on the consent agenda. Right, all in favor? All right, great, and now visitors and public comment.
If I may, uh, just before our, our budget committee. Departes, uh, at a period of time.
Sorry, Dave, Charcon to you, at the, what's what was it called?
Solsbury.
Sols, Solsbury Library. I just wanted to make sure about.
The community room.
It's not his little library, so it's not considered.
And what time, um?
Nine to three still?
Nine to three?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure, make that work.
Anybody have, like, many reports? Um, I did, I did have the, um. I don't have it, but, um. Was there any other committee reports that anybody can do while I'm looking for this? Sorry, I'm sorry, what do you?
Any committee report?
We met today for policy, we went through five, I think we've got ready to go, and we penned in three that. Have to come back, and we pulled one off of today that we need to make a few follow ups on. I think the budget committee probably just figured out where we were at. Uh, what other committee am I on, any other ones? I don't think so, you are superintendent's committee.
Um, we met. Pretty frequently for quite a while, and then all of a sudden it came to a, we had, uh. An application, and it went out to the world, we decided we would go nationwide, um, instead of. Just, uh, local in New England, and we're getting some responses, which is fantastic. And then we start doing some interviewing in January.
And the, at River Valley Technical Center, we had two students from Coal Mountain that were on the, uh, that were on the, um. The students that received certificates, the the recognized for students of the quarter, this first quarter. And that was, um. Murray Spalding, Industrial Trades One, and, um. Kyle Fisher from Criminal Justice Two. And then we also had a, um, presentation on the criminal justice program, because the, um, that program has a new teacher. And, um, it's. Former Claremont's chief, yes, and he, um, replaced, um, a gentleman who had been there forever. Um, and so it was a tough, it was a tough person to replace, but, um, he's, he's doing a really nice job, and, um, it sounds like, um, he's. He's bringing in some new, new ideas, and he's keeping some good, some really good ideas that that, um, that were going already, and, um. Sounds like the program's going really, really well, so I was really happy to see that, and, um, the, uh. The, um, carpentry program went on a career exploration pillor trip to preferred builders in Claremont. So they're going out and seeing, um, they seen people in the actual community doing their thing, and, you know, it's a, it. I'm continuing to be very impressed by what was going on over there. Um, we have a number of students that are there, um, they are student, they're the programs there that are not offered here. And are not, and are not offered down in in, um, in Keen, and, um. Then we're working, we're still working with Vermont, with the Department of Education and the Agency of Education. Um, trying to be able to have their kids be able to come here for things like ROTC. And, um, some of the stuff that that we offer that they don't offer. Um, they don't, they don't have an egg program that has animals, they have an egg program, there's forestry and those kinds of things, so. Um, so they're very interested in being able to have a a two-way thing, which would be nice, because then we'd get money from them as well as us giving them money. And so, so it's a, it's a great program, I'm very happy with it, so. I know that I had quite a few kids when I was working here who, um, that program got them through, got them through high school, so. That's my.
If I could, if I could just add one thing about the negotiations that.
Yes.
With the teachers, I just wanted to thank me, I mean, for, um, being available to. I don't know how long it took you to get you and Karen Matt on the same page, but whatever it was, it was, it it was, I I know it took a tremendous amount of effort. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I really appreciate everything that Mary did, everything that the Matt Updin did, and everything that Alyssa and, um, Andy did. To get us to the point where we are now, where we're really close, and hopefully this will go through. I can't give you any more details than that, but but I I I just thought that 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 it was a very professional and outstanding negotiation, and I think. I I want to thank you all for, for doing a great job on it. And, um, yeah, even though, even though I kind of knocked on Andy saying, he couldn't be here tonight, because he's in a bowling league.
Number two out of fifteen teams also.
But I I just wanted to let, get it in the minutes, that, uh, I I I think it was an outstanding job, and we shall be pretty happy, especially if it.
That's great, fantastic, all right, um, we have a treasurer's report that needs to be, um, accepted.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as signed.
So we have a total dollar amount, is it, shouldn't it be in the motion?
As presented. In the writing, in the minutes.
Yeah, okay, you'll include the dollar.
I usually do, yeah.
All right, I need this, well, second event discussion, but, okay. Um, all right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. We need to go into non-public. Um, oh, we have information included in the pack. Superintendent's report and building department administrator's reports in your packet, yes, so Andy.
Can I say, make a couple comments under other?
Sure.
Uh, it's all stuff we've talked about tonight. Okay, number one on the budget committee and the school board, I really think, listening to this process and the requests. Of information flowing back and forth and the amount of time and everything, I really think that we should go back next year to an all-day. Combined session with the administrators on a Saturday and go over the budget line by line. And then every question can be answered on every line about, okay, why is it this number? Why is it up from last year, why is it down from last year? It's all there in one place in one day. And that's not fishing for information.
That thing of doing it one day, one line, that that was where the whole thing of what Jamie was talking about, about writing out, having everything. You know, all of, having that written out document from everyone kind of was coming from was, was that one day session. So, yeah, I, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
We pay more money there, we don't get the right reimbursement from the state. How much are we pursuing in interstate compact or whatever it was? Because we used to try to get the state of New Hampshire and the state of Vermont together to pay us the same. Like they do in Hensdale and Brattleboro, or Anneover, Dresden, you know, there are a couple places along the Connecticut River.
Yeah.
That utilize the other side and get paid the same.
Yeah. Um, so. I know that Laurie was 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 really working on it really hard, I don't know what, uh. I'm not sure what, that she had been in in a lot of conversations with Scott, but I don't know, have you talked to Scott at all?
I talked to Scott, I didn't talk to the commissioner, which I can do.
I mean, the last, when when I got off the board and I was over there on the board, we had the state representative, it wasn't commissioner, but it was his underling. That came to our meeting at RBT C and toured the facility and everything and said, hey, if you're good, I'm gonna work on this.
Yeah, my understanding from Scott, that's my only understanding, was that. They're against doing that, they being.
The agency.
The agency.
New Hampshire?
No, the agency.
I think it's more Vermont. Paying. Um, twenty-five percent of their rate, so the state of New Hampshire, I think, right, you said is paying twenty-five percent.
No, paying seventy-five percent, but we are paying an out-of-district, excuse me, out-of-state tuition rate. Which is a lot more than what we're paying in Keen.
So say Keen, we pay five thousand, Vermont, we're paying fifteen, and Vermont doesn't adjust the rate to.
No, eighty-nine hundred, so it's it's double that now, went up fifteen hundred dollars, almost three thousand this year.
Yeah, but we were working on the state reimbursement bus, not Vermont.
The state does reimburse us, but it's a year lag, right, but it's a year lag. So this year, we are spending around two hundred. So this year, we are spending around two hundred and forty-one thousand, we're only getting a hundred and five to offset, so we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is not being offset, because that was from the previous year. So, um, but their rate went up from, um, for half a year, seven thousand five hundred ninety-five to eight thousand nine hundred and forty. Yeah, and it's gonna go up again next year. I mean, that was just a huge, huge jump, um, whereas Keene is two thousand five hundred and ninety.
Because they're, because they're subsidized by the state.
Exactly, yes.
We pay eleven thousand in Dresden. By Hartford.
For, for a year?
Perfect.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, it's, it's getting up there, I mean, it's a great vote tag.
And we're an interstate school district, we still pay eleven thousand dollars for our kids.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Seth? Okay. So, I can look into that, I, I'm, as, I'm on the, I'm on that board, so I can look into that a little more.
The substantial amount of money.
Yeah, substantial amount of money, yeah.
You know, and, and we always talk about cutting, and I don't understand why we haven't made a more concentrated effort on getting tuition, more tuition students in from Gilson, from Surin, from anywhere these fringe towns.
Yeah.
That our education is better than where they're going.
I guess better than New York.
So.
Well, it was better before, I gather.
It's the ride.
Yeah, that's often it.
It was the transportation piece, because we sent letters when I was still the BA here, to every single town all the way around us, saying, come and chat, you were on the board, yeah.
But we, yes.
So in January, we are going over to Weathersfield, Vermont to solicit them coming.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We currently have three students from budget. So, and, and they were, they actually paid the tuition to come in. We go to their school to present what we have, because Weathersfield doesn't have a high school, and they would, they'll pay the tuition to come.
It's cheaper than Annover, they sure will.
But it, that, that just goes to prove that it's not the lie for everybody.
No, I, yeah. And we do have Ocean and Lemstar kids here now.
Yeah.
We're what we've had in the past.
So we get the majority. Yeah, you get the majority of your students.
Yeah.
Wear those socks, I'm sure they'll be very impressive, they have a cup.
And the shoes.
No, you need to paint the shoes in the room.
Yeah, yes, this is true, you got the Martin shoes on still, buddy. All right. Anything else?
You can only afford so much on the full salary. Shoes.
Right, his interim, right. I'll get them, I'm sorry, okay, we need to, we need to go into that public, um, to discuss a dismissal, conversion, compensation, or dispossessing of an employee. Or, wait. Okay. Motion is going next. Oh, do I have a motion? Sorry. Uh, second. Joe.
Yes.
Thank you. Alyssa. Andy.
Yes.
Yes, and I say yes.
And, uh, Shelley did not join, correct?
A spreadsheet.
At one point she wasn't.
Oh, really?
I don't know, she.
Well, maybe.
Get on the internet.
So one. Midnight.
Brendan, are we off air?